Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, President Murray. It's my pleasure to introduce the principal of Van Buren Elementary School, Stephanie Edwards. I also want to congratulate Stephanie on Van Buren having a five-star rating with the achievement learner and learner growth above the United, above the state's average that supports Van Buren's personalized and engaged learning journey. Stephanie has been in the Janesville School District for 29 years and principal at Van Buren for 14. Principal Edwards received her bachelor's degree in elementary education and special education from Southern Illinois University and completed her master's degree in educational administration from UW-Madison. Principal Edwards, who do you have with you this evening?
I am going to let them introduce themselves, awesome Van Buren leaders.
Hi, I'm Cameron and I'm in fourth grade at Van Buren Elementary.
Hi, my name is Gabe and I go to Van Buren Elementary in first grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Doing the high five.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, boys.
Move on to 3.2, consider motion to adopt March 11, 2025 Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, eight zero. Commissioner Dahmerhausen is home. Say some prayers for his wife that's not feeling real well today. Safety message.
All right, if you attended PPC this month, you would have already heard this, but I thought it was a good message to share again. So I wanted to talk with you about avoiding brain injury and it is for people of all ages. So the best strategy is taking steps to reduce your chances of a brain injury. Here are some tips. Ensure that children play in playgrounds made of shock-absorbing materials such as hardwood, mulch, or sand. Install stair gates and window guardrails in homes with young children. Wear a properly fitting helmet when riding a bike, playing football, hockey, snow sports, skating or skate, skating or skateboarding. Always wear a seatbelt. Don't drive under the influence of alcohol or drugs. Improve lighting and eliminate trip hazards in the home or workplace. Use non-slip mats and install grab bars next to the toilet and in the tub or shower for older adults. Install handrails on stairways. Improve balance and strength with regular physical activity. But also remember to take concussions seriously as well. Get checked if you've suffered a head injury and take recovery seriously, too. You only have one brain and serious long-term effects can happen as a result of concussions. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Student presenters from Craig High School this evening, Presley Morgan.
Okay, good evening. To start off, our juniors had the ACT today, so our freshmen, sophomores, and seniors got the day off. We have FBLA State approaching, so that's the Future Business Leaders of America. We have six students that made it to state with three teams, including me and my partner, and that will be at the end of March in Green Bay. Along with that, at DECA State, we had eight out of nine of our competitors medal and get top 10, and five of those students are going to the international competition in April. We had a place that, or a team that placed second. I received first place at state and then an eighth-place competing team that got bumped up to seventh. We had our Spotlight Spectacular this weekend. It was very successful. We're starting to count the profit for that, but overall, it was really fun and we had lots of student volunteers to help us go through all of that. The last show for our spotlighters is on March 20th at 7:00. We had a National Honor Society volleyball tournament between the students and staff. We had eight teams with eight players each play for that. We made a little under $700 through that, so it was a great success. We have a state wrestler going into state for the 144-pound class. Haley Feugate, my teammate, went to state for gymnastics and our cheer team went to state for the first time since 2017. So that was really exciting for all of us. Track has just started and baseball, soccer, lacrosse, tennis, and golf will be starting soon. The Hedberg Public Library is showing students work off for the art. Craig hosted solo ensemble two weekends ago and that was a big success for everyone. Our Triumph Music Honor Society hosted that and we had lots of volunteers help out with that. Practices for our musical Anything Goes has just started. We had conferences and National Honor Society made little goody bags for the teachers filled with snacks and encouraging letters to keep them going through the conference days. Our Blue Ribbon of Promise Club is planning a trash cleanup and lots of the students and staff are getting ready for spring break in two weeks with our biannual Florida trip for the band and orchestra coming up. They're all getting their music ready and then along with band and orchestra concerts are coming up between this week and next week for choir, band, and orchestra. That's all. Thank you.
And from Parker High School, Kira Saling.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, my name is Kira Saling and I'm going to be talking about what Parker has been up to lately. So Parker's 53rd Washington Seminar departs on March 8th, which already happened, but during their week-long visit to DC, 22 students along with Kate Bennett and Brian Martin will meet with several important leaders along with their staff from Congress, lobbyists, special interest groups, and private sector positions, and they invite you to all follow along their journey with the Parker/Washington Seminar Facebook page. Our avid 11 students will be volunteering their time and helping Adams Elementary School with their St. Patrick's Day Carnival on March 14th. The Parker's music department and the Parker Arts Academy are busy as always, so here are a few things that they have been up to and have up and coming. Parker Choir had 12 students audition for the Wisconsin School Musical Association, or the WSMA All-State Honor Choir the past, this past month. Several Parker music students participated in the WSMA District Solo and Ensemble Festival hosted by Craig High School in February. Parker Choir and the Parker Arts Academy hosted both the UW-Madison Contemporary A Acapella, or Acapella Group and the Luther College Nordic Choir for the Choral Exchange. Parker Arts Academy performed their musical Hello Dolly in February. Rehearsals have started for their Disney's Mary Poppins to be performed to the public for the first two weekends in May, along with the performance of the SDG fourth-grade students on May 7th. Also, a huge congratulations to the Parker Arts Academy's musical production of Hades Town Teen Edition, which was selected as one of the only eight musicals in the nation to perform this international, these been festival this June 2025. To prepare for this, they will be holding an encore performance at Parker on June 19th and 20th, so mark your calendars. And then last month, National Honor Society held its first annual National Honors Society Cancer Awareness Week. Here are a few things that happened during this week's activities. There were color dress-up days to honor who were battling specific types of cancers. They held a Stuff It to Cancer fundraiser at the boys' basketball game, which raised $230 and 110 stuffed animals for the Isaac Strong Foundation. A Red Cross blood drive was held, which collected enough blood to help 180 people. A Stick It to Cancer fundraiser was also held at the boys' hockey game, which raised $293 for the Rock County Cancer Coalition. Students in the teen leadership class made 82 Valentine's Day cards for the Valentine's for Veterans Initiative, which is coordinated by the Wisconsin Department of Veteran Affairs. This year, Parker DECA had 10 medalists in their series events with three finalists, all of whom qualified for the International Career Development Conference, or ICDC, who, which is Cooper Buell, Navea Greer, and Tayana Call. There are four medalists in the economics test, three of whom are, three of whom were finalists and two of them qualified for ICDC, which was Cooper Buell again, and Julia Jones. In addition, Parker DECA completed six different business projects related to AI usage in a business. Anna Fallon and myself were recognized as state champions and Lila Vobian finished in fourth place, and all three have qualified for ICDC. In total, seven Parker DECA members will be represented in Janesville and Orlando, Florida at the end of April, so great job to our competitors. On March 5th, Parker's Science National Honor Society hosted an ecosystem fair for roughly 50 SDG, SDJ elementary students. The ecosystems included the prairie, tundra, higha, deep ocean, tropical rainforest, lakes and ponds, and more. The interactive fair allowed students to explore the different ecosystems of our earth and included activities to teach them about the ecosystems. The SNHS is so thankful to those of who sponsored this event, including the Parker PTSA, Lexi's Legacy, Hy-Vee Festival, and Chick-fil-A. The SNHS would also like to thank Chris Williams, who attended and shared his extensive collection of butterflies and moths. The Parker Art and the Music Departments will hold their annual Fine Arts Festival for the week of March 17 through the 21st. It will feature performances by the Parker Orchestra and Parker Bands on Tuesday evening, March 18th, beginning at 6:30 PM. Parker Choirs will perform on Wednesday evening. All performances will take place in the Parker Auditorium. In addition to the music concerts, the Parker Art Department will have a display of many art projects by Parker students in a wide variety of artistic mediums, including paintings, ceramics, jewelry, photography, and much, much more. We encourage everyone to come next week to experience the artistic and musical talents of our students at Parker High School. Parker Athletics has had another outstanding month in February with a wealth of accomplishments and memorable moments that reflect the talent and the spirit of our student athletes. From remarkable individual performance, performances to inspiring team achievements, February has been a month of growth and success. We are proud of the dedication and hard work demonstrated by our students and coaches, and tonight, we are excited to celebrate their efforts and to share these milestones with you. The top celebrations from February include, with a support, with the support of the Janesville community, Parker's Braden Gary was honored as the Box Out Sports State Athlete of the Week. The Parker Athletic Booster Club hosted a fantastic eighth annual Parker Trivia Night, bringing the community together in support of our athletic programs. A big thank you to all our sponsors and participants for making the event a success, raising over $15,000 for Parker Athletics. Parker Wrestling had a remarkable showing with four regional champions, Dominic McGuire, Carter Wesley, Cody Slater, and Katie Kent. In addition, the entire wrestling team advanced to sectionals as a team. Sophomore swimmer Owen Worth qualified in the 100 backstroke for the Speedo Zone Championship in Minnesota this March. Parker's competition cheer team earned their spot at the state competition with the traditional routine showcasing their talent and determination. Over 80 student athletes participated in the Next Level Planning Session hosted by Coach Krieger and Mrs. Cruiser, designed to help students prepare for the collegiate athletic experience. Parker Wrestling sent three qualifiers to state, Katie Kent, who was crowned sectional champion, Dominic McGuire, and Carter Wesley. Freshman Grace Blister became the first Parker gymnast to qualify for the state meet since 2011. And finally, youth champs, a ton of youth champs. Huge thank you goes out to our incredible winter head coaches who worked tirelessly with our future Vikings throughout the winter months. Coaches and volunteers hosted several free youth camps, workouts, and skill sessions, serving over 300 Janesville youth students across 50-plus nights. These opportunities included Winter Running Club, Gymnastics Skills Clinics, Basketball Open Shoots, Basketball Winter Workouts, Baseball Winter Clinics, Palm Skills Sessions, Gymnastics Camp, and Cheer Camp, where we were provided a variety of athletic development opportunities for the Janesville youth. We are incredibly grateful for the continued support of our family, families, community, and partners. Your commitment to our student athletes and the Parker Athletic Program helps create an environment where young athletes can thrive. Together, we can continue to build a program that instills discipline, perseverance, and pride, empowering our students both in athletics and in life. Thank you for being a vital part of our journey and for helping us continue shape Parker Athletics. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Moving on, we have no citizen comments. Move on to item 4.1, consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, eight to zero. All right. Board items, 5.1, update on long-range facilities plan. Thank you.
Waiting for the nod. We are, talk lots about phases and processes and where we are and just want to kind of give you a little bit an update. The phase one and two is that schematic design and the design development. So we continue to have, excuse me, our partners working with our building principals and Kim talking specifically about the spaces that we're going to develop for our special education areas. So that work continues. We also have some other pieces that will happen this summer. So as we look at those schematic designs for the enhanced security areas at Parker and Craig, this past month, we had a group of folks who did some tour at Nicolay High School, who actually have some of those enhanced security measures of which we toured and had an opportunity to take a look at. And that group was high school principals, our safety director, Dan, and really just looking at what they have to offer and what some of the things that we could potentially do to help improve the safety and security of our facilities. So that will continue and we will start that work this summer. We know that there's lots of roofing, so previous board meetings, we heard a little bit about that process. So the bids are out for Lincoln, Washington, Franklin, Marshall, and Rock River. Now again, it's not the entire building. There are sections that need to be upgraded that Dan and his team have identified, but that work will continue this summer. And again, just to kind of remind you about what the packages look like from our schools. So the first group, June 26 to August 27th, is the plan for the bid package for Lincoln, Jefferson, Wilson, Parker, Craig, and the ESC. So we're going to look for in June for that first bid package because we've got the schematic design and design development ready. We'll then turn that over and get those packages beginning in, in June of 26, does that sound right, to August of 27, and that's when that work will get completed. We're hoping that the hammers, shovels, whatever we talk, will be in the spring of 2026. The other piece from the financial areas that our first market issued, that first bond this previously, we're going to see the second issue of that bond that you approved next week. So as we talk about the finances and the things that are organized behind those two pieces, we have our partners looking at when's the best time. And so again, we're the first bond that we issued will have less basis points than what we originally anticipated or, or budgeted for when we were communicating to the public back in probably September or October when we were saying, hey, we think it's going to be, and we used 5.5 as the number. We're lower than that, so that's always a positive. And as we look at our increases and we're hopeful that they will stay neutral and we're not going to get some of those tariff things that we continue to hear about added to our costs, but we're on track to have our second issuance next week. So we're right on track. So just wanted to make sure that we're giving you updates and provide for opportunities. I know that Dan will share those updates at the next Buildings and Grounds and Finance Committee, and I know Commissioner Audrey will share that with the board at the next first April, I guess. We don't have a second board meeting here, coming up, just to kind of give you updates on what it looks like and, and where we're at. So things are going well.
Thank you. Real quick question. What are some of like the one or two top safety takeaways that you had to model after Nicolay?
I didn't attend that, so I turned that over to Dan. Maybe he could put him on the spot and answer that question.
Yeah, great question. We really wanted to bring and we offered the opportunity for Allison Beyond and Chris Lau to attend. Chris had another commitment. I think he was actually working on his multi-levels systems of support with his team. So Allison went representing as Superintendent Holzman, myself, Julie Urkey, and Craig Clemmons, the retired SRO, who's our safety and security consultant. So real quick, some, some takeaways is I think it was a great experience. We've been talking about, if you will, a segmentation of buildings and how segmentation works in the event of an emergency. So I think Allison, in order to kind of just visualize that, you know, we don't kick the tires per se, but just being there. We had a great opportunity for her to visit with the Nicolay principal, the Nicolay SRO, the Director of Buildings and Grounds, as well as their school business officials. So I think just that immersion and then understanding the segmentation component of it. One feature that we don't have, and I'm kind of hesitant to go into some detail, is really the automation of some features, right, that we currently lack and then allowing Allison, as well as Craig, to see how that automation works. And just even some of their protocols, you know, if you look at some of our high schools, we have multiple entrances, right? So I think that gives us pause to, do we perhaps rethink that, right? And I'm not saying we are, but it just, I think, gives some discussion to, hmm, that's interesting. Nicolay channels all their students through one set of doors. Now, it's a smaller population, right? They have approximately, I think, 1,100, right? So if you look at Craig and Parker, right, we're like 1,300 to 1,500. So there's some challenges, but I think just that hands-on experience for both Craig and Allison, again, kind of moving from the conceptual and the verbal to the actual hands-on.
Thank you. I understand that you probably didn't want to go into details of what, maybe what a gap would be, but no, thank you for that. That's great. I love that we're learning from other districts. That's, that's a great practice. Thank you.
We're here till eight, right? So, no. So we did even prior to that, right? So I think we had a better understanding. And so when I say we, so Dave Leader, Julie, Craig, myself, and then Tori, who's our project manager from EUA, we actually also went out to Granite Ridge in Monona Grove, right? So we saw an elementary perspective, right, and we saw a secondary perspective. And I think that's part of what Superintendent Holzman said, like, the architects and the engineers know what they're doing. We conceptually know, but to really kind of immerse and kind of feel it, right? So we not only went to Nicolay, but we also saw Granite Ridge.
Moving on, number seven. Oh, wait a minute.
You're sexy, Skippy.
Personal Policy and Curriculum Committee.
First of all, I just want to let everyone know that it's Commissioner Kevin Murray's birthday today. Happy birthday. Thank you for spending your birthday with all of us and serving your school district and community. We appreciate you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we had a really productive and informative meeting last week for PPC. Thanks for everyone who participated. We started off with a presentation that talked a lot about Act 20. What's Act 20? Well, that is a law that was created to ensure each child attending a public school, a public school, including independent charter school, are able to read proficiently by the end of third grade. This law requires schools to assess early literacy skills for students in grades 4K through 3. So Dr. DeGraff walked us through what our district is doing through this new screening process. DPI selected a screener called Ames Web Plus for the state as the required literacy screening, right? Okay. This took place in January, correct? I just, I didn't write January down, but I thought that's what my memory served. Thank you. Across our district. And the screener includes letter naming fluency, letter word sounds fluency, initial sounds, phoneme segmentation, auditory vocabulary, vocabulary and oral reading fluency based on the grade and what level. Parents receive notification of the results of the screener and any child flagged as at risk must be put on an official reading plan, which were reviewed at conferences last month with families. Resources are also being provided to families for more literacy support. Student progress is monitored weekly and at 10 weeks, parents will receive a review and update of the plan. The district will be adding more resources related to reading plan support to our district websites for families to be able to access. And there will also be spring assessments and a new summer program is being created for students who will need more support. And a lot of work has gone into this and I think we should be really proud of all of the people pulling together to get this launch because this is new. Please note that this rollout of Act 20, this is the rollout. So things are still in development here as well as statewide. So we probably will expect to see some ebb and flow over time as feedback is provided in order to strengthen programming for our students. For any other questions related to this, you, of cour, or the screener, Dr. DeGraff is our local expert, so she is always really helpful and knowledgeable about all of this. So thanks to Dr. DeGraff for all of your efforts and everyone who's been supporting that, because it was a big, and, and I think I heard you mention at our meeting that the funding has not yet been released for that from the state. So that's a challenge, right? If our funding hasn't been released to support that, but we, we had to implement it. We had to do these things. So just kudos to everyone who has been working hard. Next, we had an overview of advanced level courses for our high school students. Our overall high school enrollment has stabilized, which we've seen and we anticipate will remain stable over time. We discussed advanced placement enrollment in the district. As a reflection, the committee did remark on the distinct difference in participation between Parker and Craig students in AP coursework. And we were curious about what opportunities we could have in the district to encourage more student participation across our district. We were happy to see AP test scores of the score three or higher has increased each year over the past three. And AP testing takes place in May, so we haven't received the scores for, for those classes or tests yet. For the 2023-2024, which was the most recent test data, SDJ was above state average for students receiving three or higher. So I think that's really great. Congratulations. We have had a reduction in transcribed credit courses the last couple of years, but this is due in large part to some pretty significant changes in course structure or curriculum for certain classes that previously we had higher participation in. And as an example is the TC chemistry. And so, you know, as those changes occur, our people are always reevaluating to make sure that they're aligned with our best practices, too. So unfortunately, we were no longer able to continue to offer TC chemistry, but of course, we have AP chemistry and the traditional chemistry courses. We also briefly discussed other options, including Project Lead the Way, Start College Now, Early College Credit, Advanced Standing Programs. There is a whole lot more information about those programs on our district website under Academic and Career Planning. And, you know, our high school guidance counselors are also a great resource for more information if anyone is interested in learning more about those programs. We had a staffing update where we learned about our aggressive timeline that's been implemented for early job postings, which we were happy to hear, related to, you know, any of the vacancies that we know about at this point. SDJ has also had a recent job fair that was located at Marshall Middle School, and we are planning to participate in a job fair with CISA, too. We are also working with UW-Whitewater for some other recruitment opportunities. So thanks to our Human Resources Department for working on all of those things. So thanks to our Human Resources Department for working on all of those things to um attract new staff to our district and I'm excited to to meet new people next year. Jamie Brown provided a general benefits overview and updated our timeline for rolling out more detailed information about plan renewals. At the time of our last PPC meeting, there had been no official updates from our providers. As a reminder, we, we are really more so at their mercy as to when they are ready to share their renewal plans with us. So it's more of a waiting game. Um, and sometimes they may even be waiting on large claims from members to make decisions. And so a lot of things are really out of our hands. We would like to be able to make decisions sooner, but we just kind of have to wait from these providers. Um, so that just is, I think, good relevance for us to keep in mind when, um, as we're processing through that timeline. The Benefits Committee will be meeting later this month, and we will see a thorough presentation on renewal details from the Providers Mercy and Dean at the next PPC meeting, which is in April. And then there will be a follow-up presentation of all of that at our board meeting on April eighth. No action will be taken, just kind of as a point of reference at that meeting, as it will be for information gathering only. And then we will be moving forward with finalized plans at the April twenty-second Board of Education meeting. So just kind of think of that for your timeline moving forward as we're learning about the the health insurance um updates. Um, there also will be a follow-up meeting after that April twenty-second with the Benefits Advisory Committee as they are um finalizing just information for um support out with our district members. Finally, we move forward a number of Neola policies and retired other policies that were included in tonight's consent agenda. You already saw those. Um, but that was it, and our team did a great job. We met on Monday and are planning our um meeting for next month, which will be held Monday, April seventh, at four thirty, right here in the ESC. Thanks to my committee and all of the administrators who support PPC. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. Did you get the retake agenda request? Information?
Well, I, no, I mean.
Okay, we'll make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make sure we get that.
But I didn't get it moved forward.
Okay, all right. So we um had a gender request about our retake options and how we're managing that. And talking with the superintendent, we thought it'd be best for you guys to start that process, so we'll get that through the pipeline, okay? So that kind of goes to seven point one, future meeting dates and agenda items. Other than that one I just talked about, I have no other new uh requests from the board on agenda items. But we must have some meetings coming up.
Yes, we do. Um, our next committee meeting is the Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee. They will be meeting on Tuesday, March eighteenth, at three PM here at the ESC. And as noted by Commissioner Paul, the finance or the PPC committee will meet on Monday, April seventh, at four thirty PM, also here at the ESC. And our next Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday, April eighth, at six PM here at the ESC.